It is officially two o'clock and we're gonna call the City of Duncanville Audit Committee meeting to order. First item is receive public comments.
No comments.
There's no public comments discussion. Item A is consider the minutes of the March sixth, twenty twenty five Audit Committee meeting.
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay. Motion by American Trust approved, second by Mr. Tally. All of them favor, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? None motion passes. Item B is review the Audit Committee policies, procedures, and/or activities required annually by the City of Duncanville Audit Committee. Resolution two zero one five, one one, 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 I'm sorry, one, 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 seven, one, four. And I believe everybody has the copy of the resolution in front of you as well. And while you're having a chance to look at that, I wanna take a moment to thank Councilmember Karen Cherry Brown who served on this committee the last year, but also welcome Councilmember Gooden as the council member here as well. And thank all the rest of you for your service. And noted this was, the last time this was done was seventh today of November twenty fifteen, so it's been ten years. So there's probably a lot of some things that need to change here, some suggested changes. And Mr. Jackson and/or Mr. Abernathy. If I understood correctly, the state legislature legislation passed a thing that if you don't have your audit submitted on time, that you have to go to a no new taxes moving forward. I think that's one of the legislative actions that was passed. But this last. Right. And stuff, so that's probably something that I would say needs to be included in as an update in this resolution. And to thank you again for getting us caught up. And moving forward, thank you, Mr. Pruitt, for your assistance as well.
That ended up being perfect timing, didn't it?
Well, in the context of this resolution, I'm not sure that's the best place for that information. I'm not sure what purpose it serves in here as opposed to some policies that y'all have that you that are true policies.
I don't know where, I guess, in our financial policy, I'm trying to think of where it states, but for us already in order to be eligible for the GFOA, the Government Finance Officers Association Program and Award, it has within six months to complete your audit after the fiscal year. So we are already, that is already almost the, the, the goal that we're always setting to meet. So, but we can, of course. I don't know that we do have it physically written anymore. But we, we can check on that.
Well, just looking at the context of the information that's in here in this current resolution, I'm not saying there aren't things that probably should change. I'm sure there are, I'm sure we're gonna hear a case besides this one. It just doesn't to follow suit with what it looks like we have contained in this resolution. It seems that that's more of a procedural point to keep track of within some finance documents. I mean, it wouldn't hurt to have it in both places, but I'm, I'm just not sure.
Well, I mean, to your, I mean, to your point, the responsibility and duties of mayor is that these financial reports and other information, these systems, internal controls and ethics policies that management and city council have established in the city's audit, accounting, financial, and compliance reporting process, so that actually could fit actually under that title.
Okay. Well, I don't have, I don't have an objection to it, I just wanna make sure we're looking in the right place.
Your goal is to make sure that we are aware of it, is that right?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
That, that was the, I guess, the, the point that I wanted to at least raise for, for this committee is how can we have it in as an, as an acknowledgement, excuse me, because we know that we have the goal certainly in the, the, the charge from this committee of our completion of the audit on time. But to have some, some type of acknowledgement that the failure to do so results in the, the, the no new revenue for, for the tax rate for the, the, the following year. I don't know, to your point, Mayor, where specifically it might fit here, but at least even if it's presented in a, in a, in a report, it just has something that is an acknowledgement that can be memorialized, that could, that, that can be referred back to, so at least we have something that shows what could potentially happen if we're, you know, if we fail to present on time.
As an additional point to keep track of that ourselves as an audit committee, yeah, I think if you wanted, if the rest of the committee wanted to put it under D, I don't have an objection.
Right, Mr. Frager, do you have a comment or opinion?
Oh, I always got an opinion, you know. I, I read this and I thought, man, I gotta be a damn CPA and I gotta be a brand and I gotta have a lot of knowledge to do all the stuff this says you're supposed to do in here. A jerk can't come in here and, a guy off the street can't come here and participate because he's too ignorant about it. And I don't mean that negatively, he is, he is, she is. So, I thought, man, I've got more power than I thought, but I can't fire anybody, I can't hire anybody, I can't set wages. I don't have that power, but it acts like you do. And I'm trying to think the last time I was in here when somebody brought up a motion that said, change anything or go to the council with anything. I don't ever know that, other than we approve everything. This guy says it, they say it's good. And they say it's good, it's good. We've never quizzed anybody that I'm aware of and said, take it to the city council and bitch about it. Tell me when we did, they never have.
Well, there's never, as good a time to start as now, but to compliment Mike Burnett's. Do I call you that in here? Audit Committee Chair Mike Burnett.
Whatever.
It, nothing's been changed here since two thousand fifteen, I think as a matter of practice in just about everything we do. At least every ten years, we should take a look and see if we can do it better, so.
And annually, we do review it. Mr. Pruitt, do you have any comments or suggestions as well?
So, is there a particular one we're looking at here?
The entire resolution is. Yes, ma'am, please.
Okay, so under D responsibilities and duties, if we were to add, I would say that would be the appropriate spot. Stating that we would be remain in compliance with the GFOA regulations and the newest legislation. That's what we're auditing to make sure we're in compliance with those two and with the policies that we have here on the books for the City of Duncanville. So if we have to add it somewhere, I think that would be the most reasonable area where we can just talk about where auditing to make sure we're in compliance with our current policies here in the building and GFOA and whatever new legislation that was that passed. But I also agree, twenty fifteen, last ten years, it is about
Any other comments? What's better?
No, I, I, I do not, I, I don't have anything specific.
I think we just have to wordsmith it in. Weave it into this rather than just dropping it as a one A.
Mr. Tally, do you have any?
Do you have a motion?
I have a comment.
Yes, sir.
How come, how come in every procedure I've ever read for there's a committee, it has a reason. Do we have to have three people here to have this meeting, three members? And there's nothing in here about that.
What do you mean by three members?
Well, five people on the board.
We have, we have to have a quorum.
So three.
So, yeah, three or five.
And there's no, no deal in here about, well, two show up, I don't know why this might happen because y'all plan, when, everybody gets called ahead of time, makes a plan. But it ought to be in there that if there's no quorum, there's no meeting. That's just how all these things read. All procedures, all policies, all Robert's rules of orders. There's not a quorum, you, you don't have a meeting. Might be a good thing to have in there. Might be a different drill too, I'm not sure.
And I agree with your point, Mr. Frager, because there is item C for meetings and it doesn't, it doesn't mention anything about a, about a quorum, but we do have to have a quorum to have a meeting.
You wanna talk to Mr. Hager about that to see how that would be worded in there?
Yes.
Now, go back to add the information that we discussed earlier regarding item D. Does that, does that take a vote from us? To agree to put that in?
Yes. It does, and it, it, you know, if we don't feel like we're quite ready for this, it could be something that we could turn around and we could probably set up a little subcommittee, have it done and brought it back to this committee as well.
Yeah, let's get that, we get the wording correct, we get it so it weaves in nicely with what this section D is about and then bring it back. Again, I have no objection to adding it. But I think you've already said that it's stated elsewhere.
I can verify that, let me verify that it's, that you're talking as far as the deadline for completion of audit. I can verify if it's stated elsewhere. And then, I don't know, and we could still also have it worded into here also, so just depending on the desire of the committee, how to move forward. And so what we can do is if that, we'll take the notes today and kind of incorporate that work with Bob Hager and make sure we've got the right wording and appropriate wording. And then you get something back to you all and then go from there, like Mr. Cherry.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Pruitt, did you, you, you went through your speed reading course, did you have any?
You're already doing my biggest pet peeve, I have a lot of clients that have audit committees that and they only meet after the audit's done to go with the results of the audit. And it just works so much better, if, I think you should meet at a minimum at the beginning or sometime before the audit. And then again, at the end, and you'd be surprised how many, but I actually have a lot of clients that don't even have audit committees, but a lot of them that do, we only meet afterwards. That's always my biggest pet peeve is that you're really limiting the process when you're, when you're only meeting afterwards.
Thank you.
Don, I don't wanna draft it. Part D, paragraph two. We don't have a manual, we have one, I don't know where it is, I've never seen a manual, I've never seen the procedural. A manual of policies, procedures, and activities. I don't wanna have one, but if we need one, it's in there, it's in there that we have one.
Right.
I wonder where it is, anybody ever write one, ever, ten years ago?
I haven't seen it till.
I do not, this is all that I know of, is this particular document.
Right, that's, that's what I was gonna say too. And, and I've made a comment last time I've, this is on our website. And, and this, what I've seen don't quite match up.
Okay.
Well, Mr. Frager, it's a good catch and I think it does need to be addressed. And like many of our past policies and procedures that were written, there's a good chance nobody ever find it. If it wasn't there, so I guess the first rule is to go look and see if, well, Chiquita, you have access to look at old records, policies.
Yes, I can look and see if I have anything.
We could check and if my guess is right that they're, it won't be found, then we have to, then have a discussion about creating that, so you've given us more work.
Or eliminate, or eliminating it.
But it's not a bad thing, no, it's a good, it's a good, it's a really good catch. You referenced it, but nobody here has seen it.
Another complaint. I complain all day. It tells we're supposed to be educated about what we're doing in here. I have to go to get CEUs forty hours a week at least, and Mr. Tally does, and I'm sure this gentleman does, if he's not a reporter. I don't know if he uses.
We do.
Okay, so I'm waiting for the city to pay for me forty hours in here so I can come in here and get to benefit and learn something about this. They're not gonna do it, but I'm, but the point is what are they needing there, and I'm not sure, nobody holds our feet to the fire and the city can do that.
No, and I would also say that's part of the reason why we, when we have our committee review, we go to people that have that knowledge. And they apply for the process.
It seems like you have two levels of education here, one is for those that are already in that field and you're working on CEUs, and those of us that are not that may not need the same high level of education, we may need a more basic form of education as it pertains to our duties on the Audit Committee, so we would have to establish what is that and where is it available? I'd, I'd go in a heartbeat, not forty hours.
And, and TML does offer courses as well.
In my experience on other audit committees I've been on, that sometimes the auditor prepared that. Make it available to the, to do that, is that possible, Mr. Pruitt?
For us to provide?
Just basic knowledge regarding the financial statements and all.
Oh, sure.
Internal control, this type of thing.
Sure, we can do that.
Has that been one of your standard practices?
Uh, to an extent, I mean, we usually don't draft up and provide, you know, formal right, but we certainly could. It's something that we could put together, I think, with not too much extra effort.
Not forty hours.
Right.
Further discussion?
So are you, are you making a recommendation that we should include it, Jerry, in, in our policies?
No, it's either, it's either do it, it's either do it or take it out. But it's in there and I don't, I don't know what's right.
Well, that's something you were talking about, can kind of
Right.
We should do something with it.
Right, I agree.
Well, if you're the volunteer in the city, you'll maybe go to class now in addition.
Well, Jerry, when they want me to stop talking in a meeting, they give me one of these.
She didn't give me the microphone.
No, the, the input's definitely appreciated, that's something, that's, that's again why we're having this and why we're having the discussion on, on this. Mr. Abernathy, so Ty, do y'all have any comments? I mean, y'all, y'all seen this or familiar with it?
Pretty familiar with it and just taking notes and, you know, I think, I think everything that's been mentioned is good, I mean, especially with the, in light of getting this updated and needing to be updated, so.
So, I, I, I guess I'm gonna make the suggestion that we have reviewed this, okay, so we've kind of done that duty, but but make the suggestion that we're gonna take this to a subcommittee and, and do that, so the next question's up, who wants to be a part of the subcommittee? So, I'm, I'm sure either Mr. Jackson or Ms. Pettis would be part of that, I'll, I'll, I would be happy to be a part of that too. Do we have anybody else that wants to?
I'd be happy.
Okay.
Is that too many?
Now there's another policy we gotta do.
All right, I just wanna make another, so Mr. Contreras, Mr. Tally, myself, and, and one of the two finance. Mr. Jackson. He is smiling.
Available also.
No, no, I'm just, it's like, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I wasn't gonna.
Okay, very, very good, we'll move to item C. And let's discuss the upcoming FY twenty twenty five external audit timeline and areas of special focus. And Ms. Pettis, that you, the one I saw put it, do you want? Ms. Pettis, that you, the one I saw put it, do you wanna, do you wanna go over this?
Oh, absolutely. Just sharing on this particular, particular document, just the stakeholders, so we all know who's involved. The names of, first, of course, Audit Committee and then the Fiscal Services Team. While this is the, are the primary contacts, understand the auditors are working with multiple departments throughout, but we're the central hub and I've been the central contact. And then, of course, our Patio Brown Hill team, Todd, and our audit supervisor is Travis, which he was on for last year, so you all would be familiar with him. And, but he's not, not here today. And then in general, I just want to provide an overall timeline to give you an idea of, of our plan. So this is a very summarized document. We have a spreadsheet with, you know, probably two hundred lines of all the things that we need to accomplish to complete the audit. And in that spreadsheet, I call it the, the roadmap or our work plan, basically. So we've got all the items that are due, the task, who's responsible, an internal deadline, an audit deadline, and then a completion area. So everything's going through, our staff are completing, Richard or I are reviewing or preparing our own also. And then submitting to the auditors through a portal online. So this is just our general timeline. We are, of course, in July and having this meeting today, our Audit Committee meeting today. Also happening this week right now is our interim audit. And I know Todd's gonna share a little bit, give a little bit of an overview of just the process that we go through. We have interim audit. And then we have final fieldwork audit. So currently for interim audit, they're, they are looking at internal controls reviews, they're meeting with the departments, talking, discussing internal controls. And then also we're just making overall plans for the final audit. Come September, of course, our fiscal year will end. And then internally, we will begin, well, we've already begun, but we'll really be able to hone in on our internal assignments. So those are all, are all being divvied out to the staff so they can begin working on their items. So we'll have things such as items that may need to be accrued back to the prior year for receiving revenues in the new year, but it relates to the prior year. And then vice versa, if there are invoices coming in that relates to work that was done the prior year, we have to do some accounting gymnastics to make that all move to the appropriate year. Um, so September, October, November, and December, we're working on all of those things. Uh, that will be our internal deadline to complete our audit task and assignment. So internally, we hope to have all of those done. Be able to enjoy our holidays a little bit. And then come right back after the new year. And then the field audit will, will begin, the field audit work will begin. So that's when the auditors will uh, come in or be in contact. They'll do kind of a hybrid model so far as what we've been using of remote and onsite as needed. And they'll continue their interviews, testing, and review of our documents. So February, we hope to be in the works of, of completing our financial report draft and reviewing internally. And then as well with the auditors. Single audit, we have been eligible for a single audit the last few years due, due to the fact that we've got ARPA funding. So we've met that threshold of having to do an, an additional audit for those grant funds that we receive. And then by the end of February, just as we did last year for FY twenty-four, we hope to have those final drafts to the Audit Committee for a final review. And then we can schedule for Audit Committee meeting early March to do our exit conversation and review.
So the audit will probably be dated in March?
Yes, likely in March. The, even for us, based on timeline, historically, even prior to the last few years, it's been a, a March. I think we may have had one February deadline. So it's really, it, it's a lot of work to get done in a little bit of time.
And so, and Ms. Pettis, as you pulled this together, did you schedule something such that your staff will not have to work overtime?
That is the goal. That's why I like to start early. I actually appreciate that we're having interim audit in July. This is probably the earliest we've ever done the interim audit. But I'm excited about that because it's allowing us even to get into the mindset of that, okay, audit. We need to get all of our ducks in a row, make sure we're doing our reconciliations. It gave us a nice little kind of June thirtieth uh, timeframe for us to say, hey, we've got to make sure we've got everything in order. So we're really can focus on just that last quarter and, and be, and on a timely basis. So yes, for, for sure, this is, this, this right now is the, the jumpstart of our audit season. So we often say we're either in audit or we're in budget. And so, you know, we're, we're, this is the beautiful time of the year when we, we get to cross, we get to cross paths. But, um, so yes, the team, that is the goal. So if, I, I believe if you plan and you get the assignments out early enough, give people proper direction and, and give myself also room for if there's more training or help that's needed from the staff, that way that we can all kind of smooth this out and not have to work so many extra hours. It may come, you know, at, at times that we will have to, likely, um, at, at some point, but I do my best. Plan early, give time, allow them to be able to, um, take their own schedule, budget their time also. So that's the goal. I want to go home too.
That's good. That's good.
Are you, is your department fully staffed right now?
We, yes, we are fully staffed and we've had the same staff in Georgia, come in October. It'll be a year with the, you know, of the same staff come October.
Okay. I know in the past, it's, it's been some outturn over.
Yes.
Absolutely.
This should, should have a whole lot.
Absolutely. We have a great team, a great team. They work well together right now. Um, they're in sync and they're motivated. They want to do a good job. They're not just doing a good job, they want to do a good job.
This will make you want to go ahead and do it, you know?
Yes.
Thank you. That's, that's wonderful. Anybody have other comments or questions on the side?
I do.
Yes, sir.
You got me on a bad day, Don.
No, it's, it's a good day.
Okay. I can't help it, but I gotta go back to that first issue, second issue we discussed about the resolution. I'm gonna be brief. We're gonna meet in July and we're gonna meet in February. And we're supposed to be the connection between City Council, the auditors, and the employees. That's what this says. I think this is a bunch of baloney, but it's like, no, I'm not gonna communicate with the City Council about anything that happens at an audit. I don't want to, but I'm not going to because I'm gonna meet twice a year and this audit's gonna be done. So how can, I'm just telling you what it says. First paragraph is to be the City Council's principal agent in ensuring the independence of the financial audit, the integrity of city management, and adequacy of financial disclosure to the public. I'm just saying that it's so much smoke. It's like, I've got a job, man, I can put that on my resume. No, I can't. I guess I was a member of the Audit Committee. But this is a lot. It puts it on there like it's a lot. And it just sounds like a lot. So are we just gonna ignore that and meet twice a year? Now and at the end of the audit?
And that's my understanding, it's my understanding that when the City Council meets, you're the spokesperson for five committees. Is that kind of right? Are you not communicating with the City Council?
That's correct.
So what? We met twice. He's representing us. He's gonna represent this meeting today. He's gonna represent a meeting in February. And that's all. That's not what this says. This is a lot deeper than that. I mean, to me, about, I don't mean to be a penny pitcher, but
You're, you're not, Jerry, I mean, it's, because we've had to meet more than, than, than twice. You know, in, in the past, I think they pretty much met twice a year. Tia, you could probably confirm that, or Mr. Tally could probably confirm that better than I. And we didn't have problems. And so it was, it was on a good mode, but when we had problems, we had to meet more. And, and stuff, and, and so so, and, and I think, I think it says in here is that we'll, we'll meet at least twice a year and more if, if necessary.
Which sentence in particular in that that first, that paragraph?
It's the second, it's the second sentence. It's the City Council's principal.
Agent, okay. So this, this group right here is the principal agent in ensuring the independence of the city annual financial audit. And that's where you're saying it's a lot of work?
Not a lot of work, because we don't have a lot of work. We don't do a lot of work. We need, we, we do what we're supposed to do minimally. I'm not saying I'm not doing something right. I'm just saying it sounds like we should have more. That's what it reads. And if you look at the bullet points, you're an independent and objective party to monitor the city's financial compliance, to review and appraise the audit efforts of the city's auditor, to provide an open avenue of communication between the auditor, financial, and senior management. I'm, I don't want to pick, pick points. I just don't like it when you tell me this is my guideline and I don't feel like we're doing that guideline. That's what I think.
Okay. And, and, and I hear that and that I think that's part of that group that we'll, we'll take that into advisement as well.
Okay. Sorry, sorry, I got you bad.
No, no, no. I, I, I appreciate you bringing it up. That's, that's what we're here for. So we're back to item C. Let's discuss the upcoming twenty twenty-five external audit timeline. There is a special focus and stuff. Uh, last year, we put a focus on the field house.
Yep.
Do we have any recommendations or suggestions on an area of focus?
I'll just.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, um, Jennifer on House Park, you're the one that broke the news to us. Um, at the end of your presentation that you did a couple of weeks ago, you gave us a, a real and transparent bit of information that I was told today that another council person actually seen it on a presentation we did at the Senior Center. He was watching the numbers up there. I didn't catch it. So you wanna just tell me, Tally, what that information was? It was a public meeting, so I assume it's safe to say.
Sure, it was just giving, you know, the council, you know, preliminary data of going through our budget building process. Now, you're always gonna start, you know, with kind of a baseline, if you will, kind of knowing where our revenues are at and what we protect expenditures will be. So what I presented in April really was a preliminary, preliminary snapshot of kind of what we're foreseeing. And so, you know, we were just putting it out there that we're dealing with a budget deficit, you know, in, in the general fund. It was about two, two million dollars. But, and then this next, um, uh, preliminary budget workshop that we did with council in June, again, just giving a heads up of, or giving an update of where we were at with our revenues and with our expenditures and then, you know, again, addressing a, a, a budget deficit, so.
It was higher than the two million.
So, so I'm, I'm, I'm reading Mr. Tally's mind and saying, what, what would be the reason for that? Okay. Or what, what's the contributing factors?
Well, uh, just, uh, high level here, you know, our revenues are not keeping up with our expenditures. The expenditures that we have to make in order to have a competitive wage for police and fire mainly um, in the marketplace as we keep losing folks to other cities, um, who can afford to, uh, pay more.
Mostly have the salaries?
Yeah, salary and benefits. So it's keeping up with the market, you know, in that respect. Um, and also just, you know, as you've probably felt in your own pocketbooks of just cost of goods and services, you know, have gone up. Um, and continue to go up. So, you know, the expenditures we make for contractual things, you know, like doing road repairs and, you know, the variety of things that we, we contract with, you know, their expenditures are going up and therefore, you know, what we have to pay for those services are going up. So if I could make it as simple as possible, it's just the revenue is not keeping up with our expenditures in order for us to meet the current level of service and demand.
What was the response?
Well, we, we have to reset, obviously, on some of the things that we want to do in, in the upcoming year without impacting, we'll find a way, without impacting the, um, the current and proposed salary increases to, in particular, police and fire. And there, there was a long discussion I won't get into right now for no other reason than it's long, that, um, we've just fallen out of the marketplace to compete and, and we're desperately in a position where we could lose police and fire easily to many other cities that have enough pay differential that incentive would be there for a young person just coming on board and we paid for all their training and suddenly there's an offer to make a significant amount of money for a young person. And, and that's there and that's a reality. And it's hard to, even in our, within our best southwest cities, two of the cities are, are way ahead of us. We can't match that. We, we will go further into a deficit if we try to match that. But we've done some things to try to encourage our people that we are looking out for them. We want them to stay. We care about them. And, I mean, so far, I think it's, it's been mildly successful that they're choosing to stay. But what are we gonna do next year when it goes up again? So we have to, we have to plan for that. So this was a, a surprise and I, and I appreciate the transparency, the difficulty in presenting in that forum, but I'd ask, I'd ask for it to, Tia, do you have anything to add to it? Because I'm not trying to embarrass anybody or, or take this meeting to someplace it shouldn't be. But it was a reality that we had to deal with and I think this Audit Committee at some point needs to, needs to know that as well.
Yeah, I think, I think to that point, uh, you know, in the spirit of our continuing to bridge and I guess to a certain extent, kind of repair relationship between, you know, Finance Department, Audit Committee, City Council, City Administration. You know, we've tried to make sure that we were, uh, as or even over transparent in comparison to, uh, our prior groups. The process of the budget itself isn't anything that's, uh, uh, I guess, anything different than, you know, any other budget process in, in my various stops. Uh, you know, we ask our, our department heads and our leaders in terms of their projections uh, for the following year, some things that they would like to do, some things that they know they absolutely have to do operationally. And so where does that put us typically, uh, again, with, with, you know, where our confinements are revenue wise? We're going to have a starting position in most cases where our expenditures are going to exceed our revenues. It's just a reality um, under our current, uh, revenue structure. Uh, and then from there, you know, we have to, you know, identify those things. Uh, you know, almost, uh, I know we've had some internal discussions about maybe officially going into a, you know, priority-based budgeting type format. But similarly, we're identifying what things are absolutely, uh, that, 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 that need to happen. Um, and some things that we may be able to, uh, delay during the year or, or otherwise in our process uh, for bal- uh, balancing the budget. I think the, excuse me, the, the main thing moving forward for us was to make sure that we weren't presenting the city's financial position to be, uh, um, in a, I, I guess, a much better position than it actually is. We're not in a bad position, but it was very important for us to convey to the committee and the council and to the residents of the community about what our situation was. I think, uh, you know, just, uh, in, uh, from, from my, my vantage point and my experience in terms of just talking to random people, I think that they think that the city's financial position is in a better position than where it actually is. And so, uh, you know, it's important to us to make sure that, you know, as many groups as possible that, that we come in contact with, beginning with, you know, our leadership, that they're aware of what things are on the horizon and what constraints that we're working in, particularly on the revenue piece that Ms. Odi already, uh, alluded to. And so.
And I, I do want to thank you for your comments and stuff. I think we're kind of stretching a little more than, than what we should because it's not specifically an audit issue as it is a budget issue.
Mr. Mayor, you brought this up. So what, what is your role for this committee to address this, this budget?
It's not too much to address, but to be aware, I think we're we're working on the the issues in line with what we're supposed to be working on. I don't want anybody surprised at some point when we're talking about audit committee issues that somebody suddenly says, oh, by the way, because it's really important for you to know. I mean, you you sat up in your seat when when it was said. And I'm not blaming anybody. I think we're going in a good direction with the transparency. And we needed to know, we know. And on the council side, we'll work with with the the finance department and the city manager in any way we can to come up with ideas of how we can do that. But I think it's un, it's slightly unfair for this audit committee. Of course, the council members know, but for the rest of you, you didn't know. If you heard this out in the public and you came back to me one day and said, why didn't I know about this?
Yeah, I got you.
Yeah, so I I just didn't want that. And so I don't mean to embarrass anybody or put anybody on the spot and I hope I hope I didn't do that.
Well, I mean, and just as a citizen of this city, you know, and just my knowledge of what goes on, I thought we were in pretty good shape.
I think you you referenced that, Tia.
Yeah. I was not aware that we had a deficit coming. You know, so I would say let's let's go back and fix it as much as we can.
Well, that's what we're.
So to the same point, there were some alternative funding solutions that were brought up tonight. One of them I know had to do with being able to do reimbursements, I think, from the utility fund or anything that we're doing that can line up and offset that. So if we're looking for a focus point or special areas of focus, could that be something that we verify that it is in compliance? So when they are reimbursing a line item from a different department, could we confirm that it is in compliance with that particular funding line, like a utility fund?
I think that's, you know, that's a question and answer. We're drifting and I and I caused it, but that's a good point. So we we need to remember that question for the council and not here. Mine again, which is to make sure that.
Hold on, I'm convinced.
Yeah, so so do you example of a special focus, like we had them look at the field house, we had them look at the Mr. Pruitt, do you remember the, I don't remember the exact.
P card, purchase cards.
Yeah, P cards and and stuff. And so there's, there's areas of the accounting function that we look at as as a special focus. So budgeting's not, it's part of accounting, but it's not.
For this this special focus that we have, Mr. Pruitt, I don't think he want, that's not what he's supposed to be doing. But I just want to know, is that thing we need to do, Mr. Mayor?
No, no, it's just informational because, again, this group puts a lot of focus in what they do. Y'all have been doing this for a long time for the city, for free candy. But and you do a good job. Yeah, and the water. But you do a good job, but I wouldn't want not not want you to not know this and hear it out in public. So it's an opportunity and and even though I may have crossed the line here and I apologize for that. And again, I I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot because I appreciate the transparency that you shared with us as when you thought it was necessary and I really do appreciate that. So in here, I just want to make sure that you know, because if you hear about it, somehow, even though the audit committee responsibilities are different than what we've been talking about for the last few minutes, you still would be concerned if you came in here and said, why didn't we know about this? I that that's my thoughts anyways. I hope I'm not putting words in your mouth.
It's it's a good thought. So so, Tia, you were saying last time the focus, special focus was field house, but it was.
I think prior to that was the the city credit cards, purchase cards.
And then everything was okay on that? I don't remember the conclusion. Does any any concerns about that?
Because I I have.
Deficient, controlled deficiencies that came up as a result of that. The problem with doing anything with the budget is that we have to keep what we're doing within the scope of an audit. And when you get to the budgeting, you're totally outside the scope of an audit.
Right.
That would be challenging, although it is a worthy undertaking to do. I can't get that to fit within the scope of an audit, probably.
Now, we've completely revamped recently.
Revamp or in the process of revamping our P card process, is right?
Policy has been updated.
Yeah, so, yeah, so we had, we had updated the the P card policy earlier this fiscal year. So, but again, to Mr. Pruitt's point, you know, typically within the audit, there's something that the the auditors select, as well as the opportunity for the audit committee to select. So to Ms. Pettis's point, what was selected from the auditors was the P card and what was selected from the committee was the, the field house. Yes, sir. So, you know, similarly, if there, if there is a different area, you know, certainly within the committee's purview, to identify that. And then again, typically with, from the audit, from the auditor's perspective, that they'll let us know closer to the 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 audit time in terms of what is going to be identified for them for closer review on their.
So it could be item for for further, but Mr. Fraser, you've been quiet for a little bit. So did you have any focus or?
I have a can of back jizz.
A a focus, because because I I will I will share like, one of the concerns, I know we're moving to different softwares.
Yeah.
And 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 they're in line and it's like, okay. You know, do we have the policies procedures because like I think they're getting rid of, was it RecTrack or something like that? And going to a, but a new system and it's like, okay, are we doing that or are we?
RecTrack at Canada.
That's the the recreation software, so for memberships at the rec center and senior center and also for the booking of events like at the field house. So that's the current shared system. So they are, right now, we are in in the midst of implementation. Goalive is scheduled for October to move over to Explore is the new system that will take the place of RecTrack.
And the status of Intergov?
Intergov, as far, Intergov is, has been implemented over a year ago. I think Ms. Shahad had done a presentation on MGO not too long ago to provide those ser, services that will complement those that were missing, I think, from the Intergov implementation. So Intergov is.
Missing two modules for a while.
Correct, correct. So that that is also in the works as far as to chair, Matt Burnett's point, system that's in implementation phase also.
Is there, Mr. Mayor, is there any need, you think that we need to look at that closely?
Not at this point. I mean, at the point, at the time, it was, you know, I would say we were missing some components. I was concerned only because those two components just happened to be one of, two of the critical pieces. One was to be able to register online, which was the selling point. And that one didn't happen right away. And then that was to take payment. And I think staff found a workaround through my go for a while, which was very innovative on their part because that was the other part that contractors said, well, what's the point? Because, so we got, we got that all squared away.
They are accepting payments. The online is is in live and then they are accepting payments at this point.
Yeah, once it's put into full implementation, it it's it's what we've always wanted in the city and it was a streamlining of that process where people, contractors especially, especially master plumbers and master electricians costs a lot of money. They were, they charge a lot per hour. For them to have to drive down here to do their registration, it it costs them a lot of money.
And that is as far as permits.
Right. So as far as them being able to do it online, streamlined everything and makes them a lot happier because most progressive cities already have those programs up and running. Now, I'm real glad to hear we finally got that in place.
So I'm not, I guess we're gonna push this a bit. Now, did you have another?
You have one last thing, real quickly. So I can assume that that the cash is being reconciled, everything is straight on that, on that end?
Yes, as far as bank reconciliation is being completed on a monthly basis.
How current are you right now?
We are through May. We're through, we are, yes, reconciled through May. We're currently working on June, of course. So we have also instituted a a month, month-end schedule, internal schedule for us of things to accomplish. There's some major things that have to happen, like our P cars need to be reconciled and completed in the system. All, make sure all deposits are in and verified. All, any related journal entries, regular journal entries or corrections that need to be made. Our goal is to have all of those things completed by the tenth business day of the month. And we've been doing pretty well. We're still in in adjustment phase, but it's pretty close. We are able to to reach that. So once we have, we verify that we have everything in, we then, throughout, Georgia Card is our senior accountant that prepares the bank reconciliation. So she's working on that throughout the month, constantly kind of verifying things that are out there. If anything's been missed, anything's booked wrong. So after that ten-day business day, Georgia, uh, previous, she's.
It's a two-part.
Yeah, she's a two-parter. She's follows my, yeah, my story a bit. I think she was with the city for maybe about four or five years previously and and worked, worked with. Uh, worked with me at that time and then has since returned back last October. And so, uh, bank reconciliations, as she would say, bank recs are her jam. And that's what she she's good at, she's very good at. And and that's what she does. So after we've completed that first ten business days of the month that we've got reconciled and we feel it's in good shape, then she works to finalize her bank rec within the next five business days. And so that's our schedule. And of course, we've, you know, in anywhere, it's going to fluctuate. There are things that may happen that may, you may not make it. But we've done really well in terms of from where we came from.
Yes.
Absolutely. So, so yes, well, we're we're reconciled through May at this time and working on June reconciliation. Hope to be completed soon, maybe this week, early next week for to close out June.
So we can keep a area of special focus for another time. Mayor, do you have any comments? We're gonna start trying to wrap this up. Mr. Tally? Tia?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jerry?
I just empathize with you guys trying to keep up with price levels for employees because it's out of the way everywhere. Skill systems, every, everybody in the city got a job. It's tough. And I don't know the answer to that. Nobody does. Keep working at it.
Mayor Protem, excuse me, Mayor Protem Gooden, do you have any comments?
No.
And and even though we don't really always ask her, but she's a seniority. Okay. So, and I I don't have any additional comments. I want to accept to say thank you for being here today. And we're gonna go ahead and and call this meeting enjoyed at two fifty-five P M.